Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 School Committee Evening. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. Call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Jeff Boe?
I'll start with...
Go, sir.
Natalie Baras, student representative.
Jeff Boe? Good evening, Mark Branco, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flag, Assistant Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Good evening, Julek Wastucci.
Anthony Ternell.
German Seena, Business Administrator.
Sharon Ferminx.
Mr. Palmas, the Plumb. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will seek a motion to approve the August 17th, 2020 School Committee Minutes, August 18th, 2020 School Committee Minutes, the August 18th, 2020 Executive Session Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes are not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries five zero zero. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, we have two items correspondence. The first one is, I just want to make the committee aware that we did receive a request from Council 93 to resume negotiations. As you recall, we were very close to working out a deal about custodians and maintenance personnel towards the end of February, then obviously March happened, and that was kind of started and delayed. So they would like to re-initiate negotiations. I told them, I think it's probably best if we wait to get the school year started, but maybe towards the end of September, we can entertain beginning negotiations or restarting negotiations.
I'm good.
The second piece, sorry, comments on that?
Nope.
Sorry, the second piece of correspondence, I'm going to turn to Mr. Messina about the free lunch program that's being offered by USDA. So, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. So, we announced last week that they were extending two different meal programs that they were running during the spring and summer through the end of December 31st. Unfortunately, it did not leave a lot of clarity as to whether or not we would be eligible for that, since we were not serving meals after the March closure. There's still very specific talk about the seamless summer option program, as well as the additional spring program being eligible until December. What that means for us at this point, I'm not entirely sure. DESI is having a town hall meeting on Thursday afternoon, that I hope will get some more clarity as to whether or not we're eligible, or whether or not we need to do any action before we can be eligible, because I got something from DESI's school nutrition office this afternoon that basically said, "You have to opt out of the school lunch program and opt into the seamless summer option." So, hoping for a little more clarity, that I can bring to you guys next Tuesday, but at this point, there's still a lot of question as to whether or not we're eligible. Certainly, having free lunch available to all students is not a bad idea. The state actually applied for a universal free lunch waiver from USDA that they have not acted on, so that is also up in the air. So, I hope to have some more clarity come through this tonight.
Any other comments and questions? Seated, none. Share the success. Natalie?
At THS, the students have received their class schedules for the fall. Mr. Ogden has shared a video explaining how students will enter the building, and also how the flow of student traffic will work in the hallways. Face covering signage will be on display, as well as arrows that will keep the students walking in one direction. More videos will be shared covering arrival, dismissal, typical classroom setup, and what lunch and riding the bus will look like.
Freshman orientation will take place tomorrow. Orientation will start with the Lincoln Cohort from 9:00 to 10:00, followed by the Winslow Cohort from 10:30 to 11:30. Students will receive tours and be guided by the senior sidekicks in an effort to make the freshman high school transition fun, exciting, informative, and stress-free. At TMS, the teachers have been back for their first week of professional development. On Thursday, Chromebooks will be available for pickup, and sixth grade orientation will take place on Thursday. And at TES, today, they hosted their first meet the teacher and supply pickup event. They will afford to see the rest of the families tomorrow and Thursday. And as a reminder, second and third grade meet the teacher and supply pickup will be tomorrow, and Bridges, fourth and fifth grade will take place on Thursday, September 10th. Both events will be from 2:30 to 3:30. For families that are unable to attend the above times, please stop by TES on Thursday, September 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00, for Chromebook and supply pickup. Preschool Chromebook distribution will be during this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Some current updates. Superintendent Gaviria, she's up to the committee now, and Dr. Frank presented his finals course for the year. We'll, this committee will review them, and if we have no further updates for them, they'll probably come to the committee next week for the full committee to vote on. Capital assets subcommittee?
Mr. Chair, if I could just address that, I know we're supposed to be a capital asset subcommittee tonight, and we weren't able to have that. I just want to provide some background information. I would ask Mr. Messina to provide some background information about capital asset funding that you may have heard discussed at the last tri board meeting. So, Mr. Messina, if you don't mind providing some further insight?
I'll try. So, you may have heard Matt Hanson and Justin Salzbach talking about closing out the Culvert project, and having some change orders that required some additional funding. And one of the items they talked about as a funding source was approximately $48,000 that was still in the elementary school remediation fund, that prior to the FY '20 town meeting, town hall was allocating that amount to the roof project, phase one of the roof project at the elementary school. That essentially added to a fiscal 20-town meeting warrant of $151,000 to a total of $200,000 for phase one of the roof. When they had the overage in the Culvert project, utilizing that money now creates a funding gap in the total elementary roof project, because we do a warrant article out there for phase two of some $56,000 to finish the project. Now, this is going to open up a $48,000 that will have to be addressed at some point in the future from the capital asset subcommittee when they, when they start meeting for this year. So, it was something that, when it came up at the meeting, Superintendent and I discussed that, you know, it'd be a good idea just to let the whole committee know what, what the town was doing with the remediation fund, and what that means for our capital project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Personnel. Notification of new hires, Justin Santos, who's a THS second shift custodian, and Jocelyn Mitchell, who's a BW Technology Integration Specialist, welcome aboard. Notification of retirement, Deb Searle, TMS pad of 18-plus years, retiring. Good luck, Deb. Unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, our first policy is our second meeting of face covering policy. Now, Dr. Branco presented that to you last time. I don't know if any feedback was acceptable for, in a good spot there after the first read?
I didn't get any critical feedback, so I think we're okay. One of the comments I'll make that's happening right now is policies are being proposed throughout the Commonwealth, right off the draft policy, and then we are implementing it locally. So, right now, all face coverings are acceptable, and we're going to continue along that path unless we hear formally from any other medical professionals.
Okay.
So, so a read action request to approve the policies, a second and final read?
Yep.
So, seeking a motion to accept the policy 5.32 face coverings as a second and final read?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. NSBA to the next building project update?
Mr. Chair, last Wednesday, we hosted about 28 different individuals, probably representing 14 or 15 architects and design firms here at Tinsboro Middle School. We gave them a tour of the facility, Left Field provided PowerPoint overview of what the project entails. We had a great, great tour for all these architects. So, basically, right now, the architects and the design team, they have until September 23rd to submit an RFS to us, a request for service to us proposal, I'm sorry, to me, but I have to turn over to Left Field as our OPM. At that time, the school building committee will be presented with all of the proposals from the architect firms, and we'll use the next month and a half, two months to nail down an architectural design firm team to really look at what that comes up with in terms of schematic design and feasibility study for a middle school project. So, the project is chugging along, moving forward. We're very pleased to have almost 30 individuals here representing 14 or 15 different firms, so it feels that we're going to have some good proposals to look at out of the middle school building committee. So, it's really exciting as we go through this process. And Left Field, I'll just do a plug for Left Field. They've been a phenomenal partner. I know it's early in the process, but they've done a great job, very, very communicative. They keep us in the loop every step of the way, so very pleased with that choice right now from OPM.
Excellent. Thank you. You open up there?
Dr. Branco to pull up our PowerPoint. We'll just kind of keep you abreast of what's going on. So, this has become our standard fare for school committees, just to provide the committee with an update as to where we are in the process of reopening schools. Mark, you come.
Mm-hmm.
So, as always, we are going to lean on context and data. We are going to look at science, we're going to look at DESI guidelines, we're going to look at CDC guidelines, and we're going to look at how those apply to Tinsboro. We're not making decisions for the Boston Public Schools, we're making decisions for the Tinsboro Public Schools and the town of Tinsboro. Next slide. As of today, we are still in the green category. As you know, white is the best, green is the second best, yellow is caution, red is not good. So, right now, we're categorized as a green community. I know that in conversation with Michelle Riley today, I did learn of a few more cases of active positives in Tinsboro today, so I envision that we'll stay green for the next week or so. Excellent. I provided this information to you at the last meeting, and these were preliminary numbers. I want to say that as of today, these are the final numbers, let me rephrase that, these are the final numbers today for our learning cohorts and transportation. As you know, registration is ongoing process. We're actually seeing a trend with some of our parents who are making decisions now to say, "I want to move from remote to hybrid," so we are allowing parents until Friday. Friday is the cutoff day to say, "I want to opt into the in-person model." Now, as you know, as part of our open plan, at any point, a parent can move from in-person or hybrid to fully remote, but we'll give them until Friday to opt in. So, we ask that they, we believe they're pretty much finalized, but for those last minute changes, we can accommodate them to the best we're able right now. But these are the final numbers for your information. Next slide, Mark?
Mike, how many families have made that choice?
Six so far.
Which was from remote to hybrid?
Yes.
Could I ask a question also? What is the, what is the 145 at the elementary school remote? What is the breakdown? Do we know approximately by grade?
I could certainly get a forwarded email to you.
Like, it's not like all of kindergarten, or it's split out amongst?
It is split amongst them all. There's one grade that's higher that is an anomaly among the six, but it's, other than that one particular grade, it's pretty spread out.
So, we meet next Tuesday night, we'll bring our information, upgrade by grade breakdown.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's good information, Al. We'll include that on the slide. And actually, we're going to find the numbers for sure, because school will start at that point. So, principal communications, if you're a colleague, and asked me at the meeting before that, we're kind of at the point where the task force and the school committee and the central office team have done a lot of work, and we said, "At this point, it really needs to fall on our principals." Our principals were tasked with over-communicating and making sure parents know what's going on, what it's going to look like, and all the information they have. I just wanted to provide you an update of the number of communications that have gone out in the past two and a half to three weeks, and I know that, I know Mr. Ogden has a few more queued up for this week, as does Ms. Kavanaugh, and I'm sure Mr. Pollard does too. So, they are doing everything they can to put the word out there. I firmly believe that if you want to know what's going on in Tinsboro Public Schools, you can find it. The principals have done an outstanding job of getting the information and the word out there, so if you have questions about your bus return tomorrow, but in terms of schedules, in terms of operations, transportation, you'll have everything you possibly need before this week is out. So, congratulations, and thank you to our principals, that they've done a great job communicating to the community. Next slide. So, I'm going to turn this over to Mark, because this is going to lead right into the professional development conversation.
So, Jocelyn Mitchell, you just announced her as a new hire for our district. She came in and she's joined Tom Barnham and Derek's small but talented technology team to help us just kind of guide the ship and keep cranking forward as we move forward with new instructional practices and communication practices. So, one of the things that they've been working together on is all of the professional development and tech integration, but one place where Jocelyn is going to really help us is close the gap is around that parent support. So, I'm going to take you, provided this works, to a site that's right now a draft site that'll be live, I believe, really soon.
Also, this is that orange flyer that's in front of you right now, this specific website, and every student that's picking up a Chromebook from TES and TMS this week will receive this in the Chromebook itself.
So, this entire site is going to be set up and manned by Jocelyn, so that she can really work with families in the community. And so, just to take you for a quick highlight, when you click on here, it'll take you right through
All of elementary.
All of the other sites, and you can see helpful hints, getting started with your Chromebook, how to connect to teachers' Google Classroom. There'll be videos and tutorials and all kinds of information, and she's been cranking for the past 10 days or so to populate all of this information, and it'll be hyperlinked off our regular website, and so she'll be working with families. There'll be a help desk email that they can check on, and she's talking about also trying to, in a socially distant manner, some, you know, appropriate forums for people to either come in and get those help phone calls and emails taken care of. So, big thanks to Jocelyn for jumping on and, you know, leading our district as fast as she can to get, to get up to speed with all of this work.
And I think this website's going to evolve. As she receives input and feedback from parents, I think you'll start to see more of how do we effectively use parent to support our students and parents, and all the different applications and products that we're using in the community. Right now, we're focusing on logging into Google Classroom and getting to know your Chromebook, which makes sense, so that'll certainly evolve.
And we will continue to make sure that if you have the same name as your child, that the right person gets the invite to the Google Classroom.
Mr. McMahon.
Thank you.
I took, I took notes. So, our professional development plan, we have been very busy. We're in the second week. Big, big, big shout out to the 30-plus professionals who have helped put this together. We started weeks and weeks ago with all of our content leaders, 24, 25 members there, our administrators, our technology team, and they put together, came together for six days of planning. I'm sure it was way more than the six, but over time, we've spent a good amount of time putting together a very detailed professional development plan that includes nine full days of in-person and one remote asynchronous day. We identified three major focus areas that the plan was going to address as we got ready to reopen school. The first one was creating a safe and supportive environment for all of our staff and students, and those focused on two areas, health and safety, and then the social and emotional piece. The second area was instruction, assessment, and classroom management practices in the concurrent classroom. As you know, we have students in-person and remote, and we have that blend in almost all of our classrooms, and so that really does flip our instructional practices on its ear, and so we want to spend a lot of time making sure we understood the technology and the practices that go with that. And then the third piece that's overarching is the tech integration. So, those are kind of the three buckets that we've been hitting for the past week and a half. 25 different offerings are happening over these two weeks to support our teachers, along with plenty of time for them to plan vertically in content areas and our grade level teams. And I know this is tough to see, I'll make sure it's in your drive when we leave tonight. I just wanted you to get a quick snapshot of what it looks like. So, the whole first day and a half, we spent really working on taking care of ourselves, socially, emotionally, what it's going to look like to welcome students back in the building in a safe and supportive way. Day two, we shifted to the technology tools and all of the cart systems and the Chromebooks and the laptops and the cameras and all the materials we're going to use. And then we hit the ground running on the third day with concurrent sessions, all geared towards hoping that we can get everybody up to speed as quickly as possible and structurally. And then the other thing you'll see in here is just some cool program descriptions. It was really important to the content leaders that the professional development was delivered the same way we're going to teach children. So, for example, when Ms. Leahy was delivering her technology PD, she was in her classroom with probably 13 or less colleagues, and then we had colleagues all across the district in three different buildings, spread in different locations, and they were coming into the Google Meet on their device, basically pretending to be the remote students, so that our teachers could get a feel for what's that like to be in-person with remote students, they could get a feel for what it's like to be a remote student coming in, and ultimately, they could get a feel of what it's like to deliver instruction in that way. So, kudos to everybody who's put it together. The teachers have been working tirelessly to get prepared for all of our students. Really, really proud of the collective effort that we've put forward, and I think we're going to be in really good shape on
So, we're happy answering questions about the PD plan and what the teachers have been doing for the past six days.
What was the feedback on that part of the March, the scheduling with the classroom?
I think luckily, we had prepped people that it was going to be messy. I think we understood that we were going to have some bumps, some around tech usability, some around just instructional practices. So, administrators, all of the administrators, we've held some roundtable open forums as well, so that if they were in the middle of a learning session, they could log into my roundtable or check in with administrator, or check in with Jocelyn, or check in with Tom, to kind of, in real time, authentically ask a question, "Hey, I just stumbled into this," or "I've always wanted to still do this. This is my favorite instructional practice, my favorite management move. How do I make that happen?" So, we're trying to be there to kind of triage the real-time questions. But I think, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think every time we do it, it's getting better, and I think the hope is that every teacher has had an opportunity by the time we hit the ground on Monday to have done this once with their colleagues. So, I know that that's a big chunk of the time they're using this week is to just keep practicing the instructional component. I'm not worried about content, I'm not worried about how they meet the needs of the students. We've got great educators who have been doing that for years. It's really just how to interact through the technology and how to use those tools creatively to do what they do.
I just want to add one thing, too. I think, you know, I think we're in a good spot right now, because, you know, you're watching the evening news every night, and you're seeing what's happening in other communities. Again, I'm going to say this again, we have a great working relationship with our union. We got to an agreement early. Everyone knew what the expectation was. We were able to get the technology in their hands as quickly as we could, so that they could ask questions, get familiarity with it, and really be ready to teach our kids next Monday. So, you know, I think that partnership is huge. So, thank you to the teachers for stepping up, because we couldn't have done this without the teachers.
Well, and teachers teaching teachers is the best model you can have. We can put the framework together, but if there's only three or four of us running around and trying to teach professional instructors how to instruct, that's not the best model either. So, kudos to them for stepping up and not just worrying about their own practices, but helping support the practices of their colleagues. That's, that's been crucial.
Any other questions about PD? So, now, Mr. Chair, we're actually leading you to 9A from 8C. So, now, we're actually, Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Ogden are both here from high school to talk about athletics. As we know, athletics are like everything was scrapped last spring, and I just applaud Mr. Ogden and Mr. Palumbo for their tireless work to create some kind of opportunity and program for our kids for this fall. Though, it will be modified. So, that's what, Ms. Palumbo's here today, as well as Mr. Ogden, seeking school committee approval to adopt this overall athletic plan, which is part of the Midwatch League. And in your backup, you'll see the two major impacts it has on the 2021 school year. So, I'll turn over here to give a, or Jeff, to give a presentation at this time.
Thank you, Natalie. So, this year, Midland, Wachusett, and Central Mass have combined to create pods for tracking. It, there are pods of five or six. Our pod is proposed pods would be at North Middlesex, Littleton, and Air Shirley, and Parker Charter, which was added, added the other day for proposed group, so that we, the same, same teams, you play within your pod, and that's the only people that you play. Offering this fall will offer field hockey, boys and girls soccer, craft, boys and girls cross country, and Due to COVID, Midland and Wachusett has decided to forego middle school sports for the fall season. We haven't discussed winter or spring yet, but for this fall, we won't be offering middle school sports. We do have a waiver at the high school for girls for field hockey and boys soccer due to our lower numbers. We also have a seventh and eighth grade waiver for boys and girls cross country for the middle school, middle schoolers to play out with us this, this fall. We're recommending that all, all students who are learning remotely or using a form of, our models, that they be able to participate in the 2020, 21 school
Can I just, on that point, there was discussion, we first was talking about this back in July, and this talks about the evolution, fluidity of the situation. There was a state 委任委commission at one point that if a student was learning remotely, they would be unable to participate in athletics. That has since gone away. And now, the Midland and Wachusett, the Midwatch League is saying, well, we're saying in Tinsboro, is everyone missing that?
Majority, yes, they are.
Okay, so what we're saying in Tinsboro is regardless of remote line, hybrid, or whatever, you can get the spring athletics.
The parents are responsible for giving these teams to wherever the practice is, will be able to start.
Yep, we'll go to transportation in a minute as well.
So, with this new model, we created a fourth season, pushing football and cheer later on, so they'll start in February and go to April. So, this creates a fourth season for our, for our athletes. Typically, our seasons run about nine, nine weeks or 12 weeks. So, with this new proposal, they'll be losing, the athletes will be losing two weeks, which will be typically would be MIH tournament. So, student teams aren't guaranteed those times, they have to earn by winning at least half their games to get the tournament. So, it just will be in those two weeks. Except for with football and cheer, they'll be able to participate in a fall, in practices this fall, under the, under each district's guidelines. So, they'll make up their extra weeks in the fall, they'll be able to practice this fall, and then get their time in the spring, in their fall two season. So, proposing that we keep the user fees as it is, three, two, one, and then the fourth season be at no cost to our athletes who decide to play, who that might play a fourth season.
So, that's obviously the first impact. Then we'll talk more user fees, we created this fourth flexible season. Generally, we charge for athletics, but if students are going to participate in four seasons, you know, the rules are for this. Now, do you know what other schools are doing?
Some schools are keeping them the same, some schools are spreading it out for the fourth season, so they're taking it and adding on, extra money onto their fourth season.
Okay. But our recommendation is that we're not going to charge any given, I can't imagine we're going to allow students who participate in all four seasons, but if we do on the off-charts, they do.
Yep.
So, just for clarification, they still, if they're playing sports, they still have to pay the first sport?
Yeah, so it'd be first, yeah, first sport.
So, here are four kids who might play all four seasons?
All four, right.
And then go back to transportation. So, our Midland and Wachusett has set travel rosters for each team. So, it's 22 athletes for boys and girls soccer and for field hockey, 20 athletes per team for cross country, and six athletes per team for golf when they travel. Away games, we'll continue to provide transportation, and then for practices, the students who are at home for their remote learning day, they're responsible to get themselves to the practice field. Those who are, if they're here at the school, they will provide a shuttle for them, just like we typically do, to an off-site location. Members of the golf team, they're required, they're going to be required to get transportation to Sky Meadow for their practices and for their home meets, but we'll provide transportation for the away meets for them as well.
Just a point there as well. Currently, how many teams do we have that provide their own transportation?
For?
For any sports. Last year, hockey?
Yep, hockey.
Hockey, hockey provides their own transportation to, to their locations, swimming, snow as well, Alpine ski, they have to provide their own transportation.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, this is not a new practice of having kids provide their own transportation, something that we've done historically, particularly in those sports.
It'll only be for, we only provide transportation within the town, so.
Can I just, is our bus being used at all during this process? It will be able to get used, yeah, like for golf in particular. Well, that's what I was going to say. Yep, you can only bring six athletes, and we're able to provide the guidelines, but using a bus on that as well.
With, yep.
And then for, if, you know, potentially if the school, if our school goes red, or any school within our pod goes red, they're shut down for the season. And then within that, our code will be working with other ADs to pick up extra games that we might have lost, that we're just supposed to potentially have games with the other teams. If a team gets shut down before October 19th, they can appeal to the district athletic committee to play, potentially play in the fall two season, if there's, there's spots available to other teams. And then, this is approved, this is voted out between the athletic directors and given to the principals to vote in favor.
I'd also just like to recognize Ms. Ms. Palumbo and the rest of the athletic directors in the Midland and Wachusett, that they were so proactive with this, even before the state actually released guidelines and said, even started to discuss the possibility of sports, they were working on this plan. And this plan was part of, I think, the reason why it actually got approved at the state level as well. A lot of the ideas came directly from the Midwatch League, so they were extremely hard all of the summer to get this together. To really have a plan is when we started.
They really have a plan is when we started the year to, to not waste any time, so.
If I could just, going back to the, the students per trip, the golf team's only going to be allowed six. How many golfers do we have and how do we determine who gets left behind? And do we have a lot of that, you know, of our sports?
For, um, it'd be per team, so it'd be about, say, for 22 be your varsity soccer team, and then 22 be your varsity JV, I mean, JV team. So you'd be two different classes for the, for that one team.
For those two.
For those two.
We don't have more than two.
Any year, you're only allowed to bring six away golfers to any tournament to go practice. Who needs, I think you play 10?
Who needs to bring 10?
You can play, oh, so you play, uh, well, it's pretty easy.
Get your top six, and they said that's it.
So we're not going to be leaving students behind?
No, we will not.
Really, any point.
Is soccer the same, 22? Is that what it was last year?
So there's no, there's never been like a travel number, but with, with COVID, they've decided to break, to break down. But our numbers are, we, we, we have enough for, we won't leave any kids behind with our numbers.
Perfect, thank you.
Have you ever had 22 in a soccer team?
No, not for, not for varsity, spread out between the two.
Field hockey certainly hasn't.
No, no. And that's what, and with the waivers, we had numbers that are low, so we needed numbers to come up. That's why, that's why we apply for waivers each year.
And I guess I, the last question I'd just ask for clarification, Ms. Plumb, for the community, you know, uh, cross-country was a big, every salary, there were all these dual meets and tournament meets and invitationals. That's all about. We have cross-country against the teams in our pods, and that's it.
Yeah.
There's no, no tournament, there's no playoffs. Everything is done within the pod.
So it'd be the pod, so you play, instead of doing the big races, they'll, it's a dual meet. So you have one dual meet a week, and then as it goes to the end, we'll have a inner, inner pod, uh, tournament for your, to be your pod champion.
Then each sport also has specific guidelines, um, that are shared out that Ms. Plumbo's giving to coaches, and they're also available online.
Any other questions?
Do we have enough participation in this to pay for the busing and, uh, do we feel that we're going to have enough?
Yeah, we have good, good numbers right now. We have good numbers for all of our, all of our sports.
I think those eighth grade waivers and some of the eighth grade waivers help get the numbers up to support and sustain it. You know, and I think, you know, one of the big things that, you know, I just saw, I just talked about the, the, all-day cross-country meets, uh, those are significant bus bill. Well, those are gone. Everything's a dual meet. Everything's going to be a three or four hour round trip, and that's it. As opposed to the all-day events, um, where they were there for extensive periods of time. So, um, so I think we'll be more than okay.
Thank you. Just thank you for all the work you guys put into this.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to take action on this now, if you want to hold on the athletics.
The payments can go?
So by approving this plan, as a school committee, I put in, in the backup, there are two, two impacts it has for our current, um, practice. One would be the no user fee for the fourth sport, and two, we are allowing remote learning students to participate, um, in all athletics. Those would be the only two things that would modify any school free policy for this year.
I'm, I'm fine. Uh, I'll seek a motion to.
Can I just clarify that? It says for two-year-long practices. Is that one school year, but the two years 2021?
No, two practices for the year. Two-year-long practices.
Two, okay, I'm sorry, go on.
I'm confused now. What is that?
Yeah, I'm confused.
My voting on this point, it's going to impact two things for this year, 2021 school year. One is no charge for fourth sport, and remote learning students can't participate. Those are the only two impacts.
Okay, so I'll seek a motion to accept the THS, THS athletic plan as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 600.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, do we need to do anything on our policies? Do we have any policies that are affected by this?
We have a user fee policy, but a general, it, we have a policy on appendix. The appendix has the fees in it, so we don't necessarily have to touch the policy. We just have to amend the pen for one year.
Okay, thank you.
Number B, FY21 budget discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Seaman, but one of the things that we heard loud and clear the other night at the tribal meeting was there's still a $100,000 deficit on the town side that we, we thought that was hopefully resolved. Um, we do have a proposal that Mr. Seaman's going to walk you through right now on how we can, uh, help the town close that gap.
So, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So, um, those, those of us that were at the tribal had, um, heard that, um, Mr. Hanson presented, um, what was our full ask back in the, uh, back in the spring. Um, but then did describe a $100,000 addition error within their spreadsheets. So, you know, at the tribal, Mr. Hanson did mention that the town as a whole has this $100,000 gap in their, in the, in the town's budget. The retirement of Deb Searle that, uh, the chair mentioned earlier, um, there was discussion at the middle school as to whether or not they need to fill that position for this school year. That opens up about $35,000 in your budget. Speaking with Dr. Flanagan, um, the middle school's decision to do that seemed like a natural $35,000 that we could go back to the town and say, if we reduce our budget by that amount, will that help, help close the $100,000 gap that you have in that budget? Obviously, the budget changes, um, once you have the public hearing of the budget, even when we get to town meeting, your budget fluctuates pretty much on a daily basis based upon the thousands of moving parts that we have in the school system on a good year without COVID and everything else. This is an easy identified figure just by her retirement that, um, if the school committee wants to approve the budget change, would, you know, like the superintendent mentioned, help close that $100,000 gap. So, um, that was the one we identified. There are, uh, budget sheets in your drive for, uh, the new amount, removing the $35,299 out of your budget. At this point, you could take, take action on reducing it, or we could, uh, have further discussion into the next meeting. Town meeting, I think, is set for.
September 26th.
26th, so at some point, the town will need to have a balanced budget before that.
So this would bring the overall school committee budget request from, uh, growth of $488,000 to $453,000?
For FY21.
So the, the budget growth, the budget growth, um, in the original budget was, without the sped stabilization account factored in, was some $488,000 increase from the prior year. By making this change, it brings that increase down to $453,000 and change. Basically, a $35,299 reduction.
So just to clarify, you sent the TMS staff, do you agree there wouldn't be any hardships by not following this position?
In our current, in our current learning model, yes. A pair of professionals can still support in-person X number of students per day, given the fact that we're going to have, if we go back to one of those slides, 190 students at TMS as opposed to 390, um, we can still support those kids in the learning environment in efficient math.
Excellent. And then the town administrator agreed that this would be beneficial to closing that gap?
Yes. A conversation I had with, uh, Mr. Hanson, yes, that would be very helpful.
Any other questions?
So the $100 in per year means $35,200, that's a hundred?
Yes.
So I'll seek a motion to approve the amended FY21 budget request?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, carry 600.
Thank you.
You seen the victory, Mitch?
Finance, Mr. Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, at the meeting tonight, I presented, uh, 10 bill warrants. Um, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Uh, also prior to that, on August 25th, uh, Mr. Mullin, your single signer, came in and signed six warrants. Again, warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in the drive. And for signing of payroll, the last two payrolls of August are in your drive, and the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in there as well. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
School committee discussion.
Mr. Chair, can I tell for so, I messed myself. He told me not to do it. But by pulling the presentation in the middle, I still have one more slide to present to you.
I thought you did.
Sorry, apologize for that. Um, just in thinking about upcoming school free presentations, uh, I think it's logical. We're aiming this until 15, but then maybe I'd like to invite Mr. Lunsick to talk about student services. Uh, Mr. Feigberg can come and talk about technology. Mr. Sematary talk about what we've done to protect schools, uh, facilities. And then, uh, what we've done in the past, and I think the community has, has liked this, um, we used to historically bring all the students in one night and do a long day presentation. But by spreading it out and doing a school-specific presentation with students to come and talk about their experience, I think this year more than ever, it's going to be invaluable to hear, hear it from our kids. Um, one of additions we made to this in a conversation, uh, with the chair and vice chair, which is a great addition, in November, we will only do a student, uh, a remote learning presentation from all the students who are in a remote-only environment. So we can hear from them about their experience and how it's working for them. So this is kind of the batting order for the upcoming meetings coming up. We will continue to provide updates about reopening and where we are along the way. We'll continue with the slide, the deck, sorry, uh, to make sure our information's current, permanent, and, uh, informative for you. But as we start to think about bringing in, um, the, uh, administrative team, I think this schedule makes the most sense. So that is on tap and coming to a theater, to a theater near you soon. After you said the last slide, just any questions?
Yes. Should we do those meetings at the elementary school so we have more room?
Uh, not a bad idea. We could think about that. It's a, it's a bit more difficult to broadcast live there. So if, let me measure. I'll measure how many kids we can get back in here, six feet apart. But if we need to do that, we will.
Elementary school brings their parents and.
Yeah, yeah, if we need to do that, we'll definitely do that. Good point, Tom. Okay, so no questions. I guess we're good. So now, ask for the discussion. Thank you. All right, review discussion.
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the hard work that's been paying to, uh, paying for this upcoming school year.
Definitely the second that. It's been a lot of work from everybody, from administration, staff, even parents, trying to figure out which, which end was going to be up for the school year. So it's really been an all-out effort from, from everybody. So, thank you.
I just think as difficult as it has been for all of us to deal with this as family, community members, uh, students and educators, I, I think this is a time, it sounds strange, but it's the time to be proud of Tinsboro. Tinsboro's done a heavy amount of lifting since, uh, March 12th to 13th. Um, and we continue to do that lifting as a community, and I think it's all, all for the benefit of kids. Um, so I, I'm just proud of that work and say kudos to the community.
Mr. Fairbanks?
Almost there, thank you.
Almost there, thank you.
Um, and just to add to what Dr. Branko just said, um, thank you to our teachers who have cooperated, um, and been willing to, to work with our administrators. And it is all about the kids, and, and they're truly showing that to us, um, every day. So thank you to our, our teachers and our administrators. Um, Whitsons, they have to change everything they do. The bus company has to change everything they do. So it's not just our little community, but everybody that supports us as well. So thank you to all of them also. So, thank you.
Um, as we all know, change is always hard, and this has been a year of so many changes. And, um, I just want to thank everyone also for, um, really coming up with a lot of creative solutions, um, working together, the administration and the teachers. Dr. Flanagan's leadership has just been amazing to watch, and I'm very proud too of Tinsboro. Thank you.
I'd like to echo a lot of what was said here, um, specifically calling out the teachers for the hard work that they've been putting in to figure out this technology and trying to teach classes in two locations. Um, thanks for your adaptability. Uh, it sets a great example to our students to be adaptable and, um, figure it out and go with the flow. Um, also to piggyback off of Julie, uh, Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, thank you so much for all your hard work in this, um, and to your teams as well.
So I've had the opportunity to walk around the schools the past, all three schools the past several days. And, um, to a person, the, the most encouraging, positive thing I can say is the teachers are all saying, "Technology, we'll figure it out. We just need the kids back in front of us." That's all we want. They want the kids in the, they want them back there. They, they miss them, and they're waiting for them. And I'm, I'm so proud of, of where we are as a district to say, "We're ready for Monday, and we're going to give the kids..." That's so proud of everyone. So, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, I agree with, like you said, everybody else has been saying, um, our community's a community. We've done a very good job, all the, all the towns and see the struggles they have. Uh, we got together early, we made decisions early, we came to agreements early, we worked hard early. Um, communication's been tremendous from, you know, your office, stuff from the, from the schools. I think hiring Jonathan to work with the parents and have something dedicated to the parents and the principal and the principal was a great idea. So I just think the whole process has been tremendous, and I think we're lucky as a town. We've already done. At this stage, there is an executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. You will turn for an executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a rule call vote.
Aye.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor? Okay, 600. Your own executive session. Have a good night, everybody.